School committee meeting, Nantucket School Committee meeting of May twentieth. You have before you an agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Hold in favor.
Aye.
Aye. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. Public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on to superintendent's update.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Just a little update on hiring and staffing. We, as I said in our last meeting, we have started our hiring season and we have twenty teacher positions. We had seventeen at our last meeting, but we've had a couple of other non-renewals and a resignation since our last meeting. Still, we are below what we have had in the last several years, so I'm confident that we are in a good place, knock on wood. There are four positions open at NES, four positions at NIS, five at CPS, and seven at the high school. We have officially filled two positions at the elementary school, three positions at the intermediate school, one position at the middle school, and four tentatively filled at the high school. This means we still have approximately ten positions to interview and fill. That is ongoing, and I will share that there have been some excellent candidates that I have met and many that have applied for our openings. And I'm very eager to see this next new recommendations that come my way in the following weeks. We continue to use School Spring, our website, Town of Nantucket's website, Indeed, and other sites to recruit. So that is the update for now for hiring. I'm ready to give a transportation update. It's a, it's a good one. So today, we have a new bus driver, Paul Bazinski, who began driving for us as a full-time bus driver with the Cape Cod Collaborative. For now, Paul is scheduled to drive with, drive the small bus for our special education students on Thursdays and Fridays, and has also been assigned to a variety of field trips and athletic trips that occur daily. Cape Cod Collaborative has also hired a new monitor who has shared with us that she also wants to train to become a bus driver. And we have another person on, on deck to get his license as well. So these are all great things to hear, huge help for us, and we continue to, to look for seven D drivers as we will be receiving a seven D vehicle at some point. I did have a bus meeting with the Cape Cod Collaborative and the bus drivers not long ago. We crammed into my office and one of the monitors reminded me that at some point in the past, I announced publicly that I would be getting my seven D license and potentially drive a bus if there were ever a need. So I think I have to, I have to put my money where my mouth was and go and get that license. I hopefully never have to drive, but if I, if I do, I'm happy to do so. Just a few other things. In preparation for next year, we will be looking at reorganizing the routes, the bus routes, to consolidate stops and implement a color-coded bus tag system. Thank you to the elementary school for having implemented that this year. It has worked very well. And Cape Cod Collaborative is hoping to mimic that with all of the other schools. So we'll talk more about that. I'll reach out to your front office people to get some information on that. And we do hope to begin sign-ups for bus transportation early this year by having our parents begin the process next month. We understand that there is a lot of movement over the summer. People change addresses. They move to different locations. Things do change, but if we have a very general idea of families that are consistent and do want to keep their bus transportation as part of their child's travel to school, then it would be helpful for us to already have those numbers counted. So I will talk with principals about how to implement this and we'll try to move forward on the earlier side this year so that we feel prepared and the Cape Cod Collaborative also feels that they have a good, solid plan in place prior to our school, starting in September. And finally, some more good news. We have a new food services person who's going to be assisting us, and that is Teresa Flores. Teresa is an NES cafeteria worker. Chartwells has hired her as their new food service supervisor for Nantucket. She is new to food service administration, so she is working with Erin Long's manager. Erin Long is our regional manager. She's working with Erin's manager in Nantucket to learn how to manage inventory, to set menus for September, how to shut down kitchens in June. And she will be heading off island for two days of training in Massachusetts districts that have some strong district food service leaders. She'll have additional training on safety procedures and protocols, commodities, district, the Department of Ed-related activities, accounts payable, payroll, and HR functions. So according to Erin, she is picking up things very well, and we congratulate Teresa on her promotion and wish her well. And that's all I have for tonight.
Questions?
No questions.
Yes, you said Teresa was current staff that's stepping up?
Yes, she is currently a staff member that is employed at the NES. So we are very happy to have her and to move her along. And Erin feels very confident that she can learn this position. It's not a full food services director position, but it's a good start. We're very happy to have her, yeah.
Okay, moving on, presentations and discussions of issues to the committee. Special services update.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Deb Gately, the Director of Special Services. And tonight with me is Michelle Kedavid, our Coordinator of Special Education, and Sherri Lewis, our Coordinator of Student Support and Social Emotional Learning. This has been an incredibly busy year for the Special Services Department, and I'm going to allude to a couple of those points in a minute. I did want to point out that last week, after preparation that began in November of 2024, we had our site visit by the Department of Education, Office of, excuse me, the Office of Program Supervision and the Integrated Program Monitoring. It's had many names over the years, but the Integrated Program Monitoring for Special Education occurred over two days on the fifteenth and sixteenth, no, pardon me, the twelfth and thirteenth of May. And we have received our preliminary findings and have already started to work together as a team in order to address them. I can say that from the preliminary findings, with the new IEP form that's been in place for now almost a year and the other pieces, we weren't surprised by any of the findings. They're easily managed. They're easily addressed. And we are getting, as I said, right on them as fast as we can to address compliance because we are incredibly proud of the work that our special education liaisons do, as well as our counselors, our social workers, and of course, our TAs. But we do, we do know that we have some work to do. So once again, this year, we have a variety of staff that support special services. I will not go through every one of them. We are incredibly grateful that in our reorganization of the office staff, we have really streamlined some of our processes, that with our new educational plan system, we are, we've achieved some of the highest compliance rates that we have in the past few years. And it's largely based on the fact that we have one person that's in charge of monitoring our evaluations and our IEP signatures and the fact that parents can now sign their IEPs online. But again, in terms of all of our variety, I'm not entirely sure that a lot of people realize all of the groupings that are encompassed through, through our department. But that is why the three of us work together in tandem with our building administrators, as well as our team members to really address student needs. So when people hear special services, they sometimes just say, oh, yeah, that's special education. We're, we're more than that. We work with the entire student population. So again, in terms of student placement, I'm going to turn this over to Michelle, and she's going to talk a little bit about this. And she can explain a little bit more about what her role looks like.
Well, good evening. Thank you. Michelle Kedavid, Special Ed Coordinator. We wanted to kick off the evening and talk a little bit about our current student population. And of course, I can share a little bit about my role. This is my second year as the coordinator for special education. And along with Deb and Sherri, my role is really to support meeting processes and supporting staff and students and building administrators to support three hundred and fifty-four students that are currently qualified. The data that we're presenting tonight was collected as of, I believe, May twelfth. Out of the three hundred and fifty-four students that are currently qualified under an active plan, we can share that ten students are currently placed out of district in residential placement. Nine students receive services. They attend a combination of our private schools. And we have seen an increase in about nineteen students since the previous year. Currently, our special education rate is at a nineteen point seven percent, as opposed to the twenty point six percent average in the state at this time. And I wanted to give a little bit of comparison data, so I sort of flipped to the next slide. And just to give you a little bit of information of perhaps why we see a little bit of an increase in our student population, currently three fifty-four, previously three thirty-five. And it's not on the slides, but I did a little bit of thinking about this. And I wanted to sort of refresh everybody that effective July first, 2023, DESI did institute a early literacy screening where schools from grades K to three have been tasked to screen students who are at risk for reading challenges. And I think what we've noticed is that we've seen an increase in these referrals. We've also seen an increase in our English language learner population also referred for special education referrals. So that is a bit of what I notice in terms of the trends and increases in referrals for our division. And then just to give you a little bit of information about the breakdown of how students sort of are placed throughout the district. There is about, in total, at the elementary level, presently, a hundred and ninety-four students. When you add obviously pre-K through grades five, and then at the secondary level, we have about a hundred and sixty students from grades six through our transition students eighteen to twenty-two. At present, we only have two students in the transition phase. One student who attends Bridgewater State University and one student who is currently here at the high school. Yep, okay, thanks.
So again, when we talk about, primarily when we talk about our budget, we talk a little bit about our out-of-district placements. We've stayed relatively stagnant with our out-of-district placements. And once again, we do have ten students this year who attend eight residential schools located in Massachusetts and Connecticut. It is part of my position that I go and visit these schools, conduct observations, and meet with the teams that work with our students at those schools. And as of two weeks ago, I concluded my visits for the year. In terms of our end goal is to always return our students to the district, but also understanding that there are certain students that have a level of disability that we will not be able to accomplish as a district, only based on the fact of the number of service providers that we'd need for them to have in place. I did note that we periodically have students that, in order to create, generate further evaluation. We have one student that's in a forty-five day evaluation placement. We have one student placed at a school via settlement agreement. And nine private school students qualify for special education, but only eight students are attending the services at the public schools per parent decision. One of the things that I'd like to remind you and I shared with you at this presentation last year is that one of the things that we do is we meet with our private school representatives. I meet with them every May to renew our agreement. Within Massachusetts, we are required to have a written affirmation that I've met with private school heads of school to talk about how money, our federal grant funding is required to allocate a certain percentage to support our private school students. One of the things that we were able to do for the second year in a row was because of the number of students that required a particular service, we were able to send the provider to that school, which allowed the students to not have to leave their school to come to the district. We don't have that luxury most of the time, but we are trying to think about more opportunities to allow the kids in private school to stay there, to be able to service them. But it's, it's challenging. So it's a matter of trying to figure out, and we have not received any updates on our next level, our next allocation of funding for our federal grants. But I am confident that we can maintain the services that we currently have in place. I'm going to transition for a minute to Sherri so she can talk about five oh fours.
This past year, we have seen a slight increase in the number of students who are on five oh four plans. It's because some of them have come off of IEPs. And also, some of them have come off what we call district accommodation plans, meaning that they require additional services. One of the things that we really tried to work on this year, instead of moving directly towards a five oh four plan, is using a district accommodation plan, which is basically best teaching practices that work for individual students, as opposed to immediately providing something like a five oh four or moving towards an IEP. This has been really helpful for teachers, as well as for students in meeting their needs and helping them be their best learners. Yep?
I'm gonna jump back to that for a minute. I think that's just your repeat.
It is. I moved the wrong direction.
So I'll just talk a little bit about this. Again, I just talked a little bit about where we are in special ed. The hourly contracted social worker is the one that's going to the new school. We have now full implementation of the new IEP form as directed by DESI. And the fact that we have, the new IEP form focuses in on increased student participation. We have had at the secondary level more students participating in their IEP meetings. Our end goal for that is to generate student-run IEP meetings. We're getting there, but it's a matter of, you know, working with our students who are interested in doing that. The new IEP form is incredibly student-centered and wants the student to be able to have the say. We've been working closely with our parent advisory group to really generate how we can get more student involvement. We also have full implementation of ED Plan, which is the district's new IEP management system. Prior to this year, we were using Aspen, which is a student information, a student management system that has an IEP component. And because of the new system, we actually have raised our compliance because again, when an IEP is completed and signed by me, a link automatically gets sent to a parent who can sign the IEP online. We also email them to parents. Parents come into our office to sign them. We've been trying to, although we are legally required to mail an IEP via US mail, we try, we do it. But we don't rely that, on that as our form of getting a parent's signature because sometimes parents don't get them. And again, I talked a little bit about the Integrated Program Review that we participated in. I, I would be remiss to not recognize our staff at this point with regards to the implementation of ED Plan and the new IEP form. This has taken an immense amount of work in preparation, in time, and energy, and inquiry, and everybody, the special ed liaisons and the school counselors who are in charge of the five oh fours. They've, they've really accomplished a mammoth task and I, and I have to really, I, I cannot impress enough about how much work they've done. We were awarded a grant through the Department of, through the state, I should say, that allowed us to allocate money to compensate teachers who had to transfer educational plans from Aspen into ED Plan. And that's been working very well because when you change a system, it doesn't take all of the information, switch it over. So it's been, I, there were some points in the year that I wasn't sure how we were moving forward, but I can say with confidence right now, we're, we're in really good shape. And I'm incredibly proud of the work that they've all done. And I will switch it back to Sherri.
So this year, we have social emotional learning in all schools. In the elementary and intermediate school levels, it's through Second Step, as well as Responsive Classroom at the middle school and Teen Truth. This is its third year at the high school. We use Zones of Regulation and Social Thinking curriculum, which is great because we have that continuity of language and expectations and strategies across all grade levels at this point. We also have Tier Two and Three programs at the high school, which are supported by a two-year grant that started last, I'm sorry, this year. And that is through the Bright program, which we have used that money in our Bridge Room. The Bridge Room is our program that supports students who are returning from hospitalizations or have a high level of critical emotional health need that otherwise might be sent off island. And so we work very closely with their outside healthcare providers, mental health care providers, and try and provide as much wraparound service as possible to meet their needs. We also use DESA data, which tells us students' areas of needs in terms of social skills, self-awareness, behavior management, and help us determine what goals they need to meet in order to be more successful. This past year, actually in the spring, we were able to pilot a program. It's called Mayo, and it's a mental health assessment tool. It is able to assess things like anxiety, depression, ADHD, multiple things, trauma, which has been really great in identifying students who are in need of services, as well as substantiating the work that our counseling, our counselors are doing. This past year, we still are certifying staff that are interested in CPR and AED. This year, right now, we have thirty-three staff members district-wide with current certifications. Did I go the wrong way again? I did. There we go. So in terms of student and student services and health services, these are the interventions that we have available district-wide. It's been really wonderful to watch these programs grow in coordination and collaboration with outside services on the island, as well as off the island. In all of our schools, we offer small group counseling at a tier one and tier two level. We've been able to partner with the Family Resource Center, which we really appreciate. They've offered small group counseling at almost all of our schools. This year, they really targeted the middle school in offering lunch groups for students that have a hard time navigating the cafeteria. That was really wonderful. The students really appreciated it. Fairwoods also coordinated with us for the first time this year in terms of offering a sibling group, which we've never done before. So we really appreciate their outreach and helping us bring that to life. The Bridge program continues to grow. We went from having one counselor last year to having two adjustment counselors slash social workers this year. We've also really been steadily implementing six-week SEL interventions for students who may have come across a temporary crisis, who may have been suspended. Multiple things where those interventions really help to curtail further needs down the line is what we're tracking. Our SAVE Group, the Substance Alcohol Vaping Education Program, continues to go steady. And once again, thanks to Elise Norton with ASAP, who this is her third year collaborating with the school to address these needs. We now have canine therapy in all four schools. We just started canine therapy at NIS and NES this spring. That program is really developing and going strong. We've already talked about the Bright program, Teen Truth Pass. This is our second year using that program. It's an off-island program where it's an alternate to in-school or out-of-school suspensions or sort of a reset for students that might have attendance issues or any emotional, social issues where, again, it benefits them to go to this therapeutic setting. One of our staff members travels with them every day on off-island in order to have access to those services. We continue to implement QBAS Safety Care, de-escalation training. And, yep, we're, we're continuing to grow our programming. Did I go the wrong way again? I keep doing the up button instead of the up button. So upcoming, I just recently completed a grant for suicide prevention. It's a two-year program, which we're like ninety-nine percent going to get. The focus is on trauma attuned counseling and making sure that we're identifying any gaps that we might currently have in our system. We are steadily implementing suicide safety and threat assessments, and we just did a protocol update this year. As Deb already talked about, we are transitioning our five oh fours to ED Plan, which has helped us meet compliance and also developing a better understanding of how to use district accommodation plans. Again, these are all of the partners that we've worked with this year. We have really built a great partnership with Youth Villages this year, which is a wraparound service, same with JRI. Department of Mental Health really fuels Youth Villages, so we really appreciate the work that they've done. So just again, thank you for all of the people that have partnered with us in meeting our student needs.
So again, as far as we're going for, for next school year, we are grateful that our staff will be remaining intact. We're maintaining all of our positions because it takes a lot of people to do the work we do. We will continue to seek and hopefully secure a third school psychologist, which is a job that's out of it open for three years. And as far as the work with ED Plan is concerned, we hope by the end of this year, very beginning of next year, we're at a hundred percent transfer. We're going to continue our professional development to our district leadership team, as well as regular education staff and being able to use that, use the new program. We have, everyone in the district does have access to ED Plan right now. They're just not all entirely sure how to utilize it. The online access for families for IEP documents and the digital signature. And one of the things that I did not mention, which is probably one of my absolute favorite aspects about ED Plan, is that when a liaison is finished with an educational plan, they submit it to me and I can review it. I just click one button and it translates into the target language of the family. So they're getting the documents in real time in their language. That is something that does not, has not typically happened in the past. And it's, it's allowing for our families to get a greater understanding because we have an onsite interpreter at the meetings, but to be able to then see the plan in their languages is important. When we signed up for this program, we were, When we signed up for this program, we were, we targeted our top languages, Spanish and Portuguese, we can also translate our IEPs into Bulgarian, um, and I believe Haitian Creole was the fourth one. Um, for the other ones that we need translated, we do have to contract with another provider. Um, and, and really what we're hoping to do is increase our ability to monitor compliance within the right regulations that IDEA um sets forth, and then of course, we will be concluding next year our continued training over the past three years for the Orton Gillingham cohort from the uh district. Uh, by the conclusion of next school year, we will have trained and certified individuals at all four buildings.
That's fantastic.
So, which has been a lot, a lot of work on um everyone's um part. Do you want to talk a little bit more about this? Yeah. Yep. Um, oops, and that goes into next presentation. So, thank you for hearing us out, I think you can generally get a sense, we are in a, we're a department in constant motion, and um making sure that we're attending to the needs of our students and families, um, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Um, thank you Deb, that was a phenomenal presentation, and this is truly amazing work. Massive congratulations. There was one thing you mentioned, I just want to ask a kind of a further question.
Sure.
So I love the idea of um students taking a little control for themselves and having the student-run IEP meetings.
Yeah.
That is, seems extremely smart to me. Um, I just want to ask you a couple of questions about that. Um, do, is the student given options, or how do those meetings go, you know, so that they are informed a little bit? And um is there like a staffer, teacher liaison that leads that to make sure that they don't take the path of least resistance?
Yeah, yeah, so we, we have had, and Michelle can even allude to, she can speak to that as well, um, I just wanted to preface this by saying that having students attend, they, they all can attend at any time, but at age fourteen, students are invited to their meetings, and traditionally, as practice in this district, a lot of families have elected not to have their child attend the meeting, um, and we're really pushing back a lot on that because kids need to be part of their, their, their process and their decision-making.
Agreed.
So Michelle can tell you a little bit about the meetings she's had.
Sure, sure. Yeah, that has been one of the highlights for me, working with um Mandy and her staff at the high school. What is occurring, and I've observed directly this year, is students are um encouraged to lead their meetings, we want them to be the active voice in the meeting, they are sort of trained and prepped by their um special education liaison, um, and they have sort of a series of questions and talking points, um, and they really do a beautiful job, they start the meeting, they have the proper preparation, they have the opportunity to express what works for them, what they need and what they don't need, um, and we're really just supporting the student. Um, we've also, I'm also seeing, sort of in that vein, there are students at younger ages that definitely want to participate and ask to be part of the meeting, um, in preparation for the meeting, so we're hoping now with the new IEP and the format that we can see um students, not only at the high school, but uh across all schools participate. Yeah, it's been a pleasure to watch.
Kind of took my question, um, so that's great, uh, just thank you for all the work that you guys are doing, it's really incredible, some of my friends really say a lot of really great things about some of the work that you do, so thank you so much.
Thanks. I have no questions, um, but I just want to say thank you, and as a parent with children with IEPs, um, th- thank you, I mean, this is, as Vince said, this is a tremendous presentation, and I think it helps us understand what exactly is special education, what services are provided, because I think we all have, or some parents have that expectation, it's just special education, no, there's more services out there for our children.
Yeah. I echo the sentiments of the team, as you know, Deb, one of your biggest cheerleaders. I um had a question around the 504, so you said there was sort of steps that are taken before a child would then have, be placed on a, a 504, so there's an intervention? I'm just trying to understand that process.
So there are multiple things that we do, um, typically, when we have concerns about a student, they're referred to MTSS or Multi-Tiered um Support System, and then we just look at where there might be gaps and how we can fill them. So at um some of the younger grades, it might be a reading intervention, it might be a math intervention, um, typically, the part that I'm involved in is anything that's SEL-related, so, or where if it looks like it's going to go into a 504, or a student might need accommodations, then some of the things we might do is just start with something that's called a district accommodation plan, to sort of kind of map out how the student learns best and what accommodations they might need, and it might be something as simple as extended time, or verbal and written directions, or, you know, notifying them that we're getting ready to transition to another activity. And then as we document the data on that, we're then able to determine that, yes, this child absolutely needs this, it needs to be more formalized, and that is when we would move to a 504 plan. Um, typically, we like to have, for students to have a diagnosis before we put them on a 504 plan, it's not necessarily required, but it is preferred.
Thank you. And then I just had a couple of questions, uh, the two organizations I'm unfamiliar with are Children's Cove, and then you spoke a, a little bit about it, Sheri, the Youth Villages, can you just talk a little bit about those?
Yeah, sure, so um Children's Cove is actually an organization that assists students who have been sexually abused.
Okay.
Um, and that is a facility that is off-island, um, they come to the island every year and meet with me and other counseling staff just to remind us of their services. Um, fortunately, it's not an organization that we have to use frequently, but it is great that it is out there, and what they do is make sure that the child only has to be interviewed once as opposed to multiple times, so that they're not re-traumatized in reporting. Um, in terms of Youth Villages, they are now actually on the island, and there was a presentation that was done, um, oh my gosh, I think it was last week, um, and Rosemary hosted it um for um Community of Collaborative Health, I think, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact name. But um, uh, we've been working with Youth Villages for multiple years, again, this is the first year that they've been on the island, and so we've only been able to secure like two to three slots in the past. This year, because they're on the island, they arrived in March, we now have about five to six slots that we can fill. Um, it is a wraparound service that provides counseling, um, it provides parent and student interventions, they also communicate with the school so that we're a part of that in servicing the child, so that it's like, again, a wraparound service to meet all of the needs. There's a lot of communication between the school and those service providers, um, and they also collaborate with Fair Winds, so it, it just is a complete team all working together to help the family and the child find success.
That's great, and where are they based primarily?
They're based, um, well, there's a worker here on the island now, um, but they are based, I want to say in Barnstable, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly, but.
No, it's okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. Four trained teachers in Orton Gillingham. We have seventeen hundred kids, uh, a significant percentage I would estimate have problems with reading.
Yeah.
I mean, there was a recent article revealing that Mississippi has revamped their entire reading program, and now their scores are higher than the national average, and we don't tend to think of Mississippi as being Illuminati.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, they're very good on uh making sure the kids get their vaccines because there is no cop-out in Mississippi.
Yeah.
Um, if you're alive, you get vaccinated, but I was wondering, are we doing enough in reading?
Yep.
Because that is a, a such a critical skill, um, because I think kids that get out of NES or in the middle of NIS and are not reading.
Sure.
Uh, are going to run into problems.
Yeah, a- and I can definitely address that, so over the past, including this year and next year, we'll have done a four-year program of training, where by the time we're done, there will actually be three teachers at NES, there are eight at NIS, two at CPS, and two at NHS. Specialized reading comes through the administration of an IEP, so that is a very specialized, rules-based, focused reading. With the interventionists that work at the lower levels, there is constant progress monitoring to see how kids are doing in terms of reading, and as um was mentioned by Michelle about the early literacy screening, we are, we are evaluating kids as of kindergarten to see how they're doing. Now, looking at that and then trying to, uh, and again, I know Melissa Devitt is, is working through Curriculum and Humanities, is looking more closely at that as well, that's part of where I, I know there's significant push in literacy for the twenty-six, twenty, uh, pardon me, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, I'm getting ahead of myself, um, the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is also there, so we have to do a lot of collaboration with that to look at how kids are working through their literacy development. So in, in the, in the special services realm, we work with the kids with the highest level of need to be able to look at how we're kind of looking at their, their phonemic development, phonemic awareness, and, and where they're at there, and within the next, you know, few years, it's, it's going to be a heavy focus on closing those gaps, because there are some kids that, for whatever reason, maybe they didn't have early, you know, intervention with, with getting literacy support, every, every student has a story, and we have to really, we are incredibly fortunate as a district to be able to pinpoint individuals to try to figure out how to best help them, whether it be through intervention or whether it be through, you know, having to evaluate them, um, so I hear what you're saying, I, I definitely hear that, that part of it, but I know that there's a lot of work being done to focus in on that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Everybody good. Um, if I may, just, I just wanted to thank the Special Services Department, you have a Goliath role, and um it's, uh, you know, it, it's good to know that we've got the right people in the right place to make sure that our students are served, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and I just, I just wanted to conclude by saying, and again, I do this every year, I'm now at the, nearing the end of my fifth year in the district, I don't know where that time has gone, um, but when I started in twenty-twenty in, in Nantucket, um, everything that you just learned about was done by one person, and I think you can see very clearly the necessity to have supporting people in these roles to make it. I, I told people my first year, I can do this job, but you want it done right, and in, one person couldn't do it, so I continue to express my incredible um gratitude to the district for seeing that vision and being able to support this in order to give kids what they need um to be successful, so thanks again.
Thank you.
Moving on to policy updates.
Podia.
Shall I lead us through the policy updates?
Yes.
Okay, great.
That would be great, thank you.
So we will start with a um, a policy that's not actually a policy, but it's the rules and procedures um wit, uh, attached to the policy of JLDBA. Um, the rules and procedures documents that, that accompany policies are actually designed by um the district. Uh, the policy itself is um certainly a district uh policy in conjunction with MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, um, but when there comes um a time to update rules and procedures, that is basically at the district's discretion to make changes. This current uh policy, uh, the RNP section of it was um in great need to be um adjusted because um we had uh some very old um uh language in here that um was connected to some of the associations that worked with us as part of suicide prevention and suicide um um support, such as Gosnold, that's a, that is a, an organization that is no longer on the island, and so um there was a significant um process in coming together with um school leaders, with uh leaders from Fair Winds, which is now our Suicide Prevention Mobile Crisis, um, with um the Special Services Department in particular, um Sheri Lewis, who um really kind of spearheaded this, um, this, this uh RNP overhaul, and uh, and so it is a bit confusing, but what we wanted to share with you is that um what you see in your packet is the old policy with um red language being additional language and crossed-out language, uh, formal language, and then a, and you see, it's quite a long, quite a long rules and procedures attachment, and then um when you take a look um at the next part, that is the clean copy of the brand-new Rules and Procedures Emergency Safety Assessment. So um the pieces that um, that I want to, to uh just highlight, I say, and I might bring Sheri Lewis back to assist with this, um, but some of the, um, the pieces that are quite different, just um to, to share with you, is that we have um pulled together, rather than having um uh very specific people such as um school, school social worker or designee to be the one person, or potentially uh only, you know, one or two people to be um dealing with a, with an emergency safety assessment, we now have a crisis support team or a CST, and so you will see that throughout the policy as um the um body that assists and, and supports any student that might be in crisis. Um, that's one piece that's important, and Sheri, please jump in if you see anything that I am missing, so um, are you, do you want to speak to it, or do you want me to keep going? That's fine, my sup, here's my support. Um, the other part that's quite different is there's a chart, um, in, on page one, in um section three, you will notice that there are um four categories, that's a change from previous, um, our previously, our RNP, because we added a category um with imminent danger, so critical condition is category four, where students require immediate, immediate emergency medical attention, um, and then category three is imminent danger, which is where there needs to be immediate intervention, but it may not require um medical attention. So those are two distinct um pieces to that, and we wanted to make that clear so that um, that the um people who are deciding around what the next steps are around um the support um had that distinction, and then category two and one are the same. Um, so those are really the, the most distinct pieces to it. Um, now, I, I think another piece that was quite different in, in this case was also the um back-to-school transition protocol at the end, the very last page, um, but Sheri, I'm going to let you go through that, and then anything else that might need to be shared, and I'm going to move this forward to the new policy. There we go.
Um, some other changes that we made um in conjunction with um changes that Mobile Crisis made when it transitioned from Gosnold to Fair Winds, um, Fair Winds is now looking for um, I, I guess, a less traumatic experience for students that might need to be evaluated by Mobile Crisis, so now we have several options, instead of just, you know, having Mobile Crisis come to the high school, which may result in a student going to Cottage Hospital, our goal is to try and keep students out of the hospital. Our goal is to try and have them treated by their current provider, or by urgent behavioral healthcare, or by having Mobile Crisis come to the school, um, which creates a less traumatic student for a stu-, uh, less traumatic situation for a student who is all, all, bleh, I'm sorry, who is in current crisis. Um, and we found that throughout this year, while we've been able to implement this, it has had tremendous success. Um, the students are able to come back much more quickly, um, we've had fewer hospitalizations, I think we've had maybe three hospitalizations this entire school year, as opposed to the multiple hospitalizations we had my very first year here, so I, I would say that this has been a success so far. In terms of re-entry, anytime a student is evaluated by urgent behavioral healthcare, um, or seen by Mobile Crisis, or they have to have an emergency appointment with her provider based on something that's occurred during the school day, we have a re-entry meeting the following morning, which allows our team of the school counselor, um, the administrator, um, sometimes me, and sometimes the school nurse, to gather information to make sure that the student is supported upon their return. Are they able to go back to class, do they need a safe place to go throughout the day? We also try to create a wellness plan, which identifies who their support people are, both in and out of school, and what strategies they're going to use if they become stressed. This has been really helpful in meeting the needs of students.
Just want to mention a few other things. Um, the draft of this, um, of this policy has been shared with our principals, and we've also shared it with Fair Winds Mobile Crisis staff, so they have had a chance to see it and review it before it was brought to the um policy subcommittee meeting. Um, so in, in speaking with the policy subcommittee and, and presenting it at that time, um, I believe that- I believe that they are quite, they're comfortable with it. Clearly, I want to open this up for discussion if there's anything that you would like to ask questions about. And I did, I know that Dr. Lepary does have a point to be made, and I'm certainly ready to hear that.
I think we're missing one piece in this. The school nurses. The school nurses are trained professionals, and they should be involved in this because I'll tell you, when we have dealt with traumatic episodes in the school, we bring in all these people that the kids don't know. And I can almost guarantee you that the coordinator of student support is not familiar with all the kids, and the school nurses generally are. And I think it's very important to have them as part of this crisis team. They are perhaps the closest thing that the kids have as an adult they can speak to in a safe place and be listened to. And I just think that may prevent kids getting to this stage, but it also may help the kid be quiet as you're getting the other people involved because it's always nice to have somebody next to you that knows you.
Any thoughts on this?
Yes, I'm happy to speak to that. I appreciate your feedback, and I definitely value it. I will refer back to what Mary, our nurse at the elementary school, pointed out a couple of meetings ago, and that is that our school nurses are overtaxed. They have large numbers of students that they're trying to support. When we do have a crisis, we do bring our school nurses in. It depends on what the crisis is. Typically, when we're talking about a mental health crisis, for the most part, our counselors are already tuned in to those students. And as our students escalate and become, or have a higher level of need, I am involved in those cases and I do know those students. I'm in all four buildings regularly, and I do know the students and I do pay close attention. When we do need to bring in a school nurse, we absolutely do. We include them at the high school level in our bridge meetings. We always include them if a student is returning from a hospitalization because their knowledge and their training is essential to meeting student needs. So we can definitely look at ways to incorporate them more in the process. But that's also what the role of our social workers and our adjustment counselors are because they are the ones who are also highly trained in identifying suicidal ideation and the level of need, and that's also why we bring in the outside providers. But thank you, I really appreciate your feedback.
I think a lot of information gets passed to the nurse that does not get passed to other people because the kids, I think, speak more freely to the nurses than they may to other people. And it may be a way of obviating you having to bring in a crisis support team.
If I may, through the chair, and of course also through the coordinator of special services, I mean, of student support, who has done a lot of work on this. The crisis support team has a group of people who can be involved. They don't have to be involved, but they can. And if you read that very first line, it does say, "All reports regarding harmful behavior and/or suicide ideation are reported to a building administrator, a school social worker, a school counselor, the coordinator of student support, and/or the director of special services." With the, we haven't had a chance to discuss this, but would it be an issue if we added the nurse to that list? That wouldn't be a requirement that they be involved. However, just like the others who are present, they could be involved seeing the need for the student.
Yes, they mostly are included in special services.
So if it's a question of semantics and we can add that to this, I'm hoping that that would suffice.
I think that's perfect. I mean, it's just, it's a resource that we tend to overlook. And being married to one and related to one, I know the information that gets passed to the school nurses is A, confidential, and B, kids open up much more to them than people they don't know.
Okay, so if that's okay with you, Sherri, we would add that to the list. So if I may, we would need to make a motion for, if you're planning to approve this policy, to approve with the addition of school nurse to the crisis support team. So if that's possible, when we read that, would you please add that language? And that way, when the committee votes on this, then that will be included, and we will change that in the thing. I want to mention one other thing, which I think you will see, or you have seen as a reference. I really want to thank Sherri for the work she has done on this. It has been a lot of work and very specified work. It has to be really attentively crafted. She put together quick guides for activities, sports, events, field trips, but also for all of our school-based crisis support teams. And those quick guides are one-page or one-and-a-half-page guides that a building supervisor or anybody on that crisis support team could pull out quickly and identify what the steps are. And so we are so thankful to her for having created this. And the principals and folks on the district leadership team felt very supported by having this because often they're trying to pull out a policy and the rules and procedures, and that was a seven or eight-page policy that they were originally trying to look at to figure out what the process was. So this is so much easier to read. It incorporates all of the important information from the rules and procedure, and that's available to them. So thank you very much, Sherri, for that. And I know people are really pleased that they have that access to. That's all. So if you want to move forward with the vote, you're welcome to do that, and then we can go on to the other policies.
Or do you want to do them all?
I can do all the others too. I can continue. Just when we do the individual policy, you'll have to remember that addition. Thank you, Sherri, very, very much. Okay. Just make sure I have the right one here. The next policy that we'll be reviewing, or that the subcommittee reviewed was EEAG, which is Student Transportation in Private Vehicles. The policy that's created, added one specific, the MASC file, which is the updated policy, added one specific number. And if you look at number four, "The driver of any non-state adult passenger will be subject to a satisfactory Cory and/or background check in accordance with Massachusetts general laws and school committee policy." That is a one addition. The subcommittee makes the recommendation to the full committee to adopt the MASC language. So we would be adopting the language that is highlighted in pale yellow below what we currently have, which is at the top. So that is the recommendation. Any questions on that? Okay, next policy is EFC, Free and Reduced Price Food Services. Again, the MASC language is below in the pale yellow. Things have changed certainly since several years with free and reduced changing in Massachusetts to universal free lunch. So we've changed the title of this, plus some of the specifics around this that have to do with how the universal free school lunch works in Massachusetts. So this update is important, and we wanted to make sure that this policy was adopted verbatim from the MASC policy. So the recommendation of the subcommittee is to adopt the MASC language in pale yellow. Moving on, any questions with that? Yes, please.
Not a question, but an observation. So for the old version, the Child Nutrition Act of 1966 was the main part. It seems to be updated by a new guideline from May 2017, as well as new MASC information from 2023. So putting those together now makes it timely, is that it?
Yes.
Got it.
Okay, moving on. Our next policy is IJOA, Field Trip and Student Travel. This policy is a little bit long, as you'll notice, and the recommended policy from MASC has shortened that into a much shorter, much more abbreviated version. The reason why is the policy itself, again, should be more stated matter-of-factly, very concise. What we need to do instead is update our rules and procedures documents to include our artifacts around the travel forms, et cetera. And so the subcommittee discussed this at length and felt that the MASC policy is more appropriate and that we would make adjustments in the RNP, the rules and procedures. So the recommendation of the subcommittee is to adopt the MASC language. Any questions on that? Okay, moving forward. The next policy is ILBA, District Program Assessments. This policy does not exist in MASC. It was discarded many years before. And so the subcommittee felt that it was not necessary for us to keep this policy and that we should also discard our policy for that reason. So, any questions about that?
Sorry, this policy is, ILBA is going.
Yes, it is. It is no longer, it has no longer been in the MASC policies. It is outdated, and we didn't feel it was necessary. That goes for also the next policy, IMA, which is Teaching Activities and Presentations. That is also an outdated policy, and the school committee, subcommittee for policy felt that it was not necessary to keep this in our policy book, but to remove it. So that is another one. Moving on. Policy IJND, which is Access to Digital Resources. This policy, you'll notice, the Nantucket policy is several pages. There's a lot of specifics around safety procedures, permission agreement forms, employee use, community use, et cetera. The MASC policy has been abbreviated to a very, very succinct policy, trimmed down because the language will move from the current Nantucket policy into, again, rules and procedures. So we want to keep our policies short and include our rules and procedures with more detail around protocols and other language that's meteor because that is where we can adapt that and make it our own. So again, the recommendation from the subcommittee was to adopt the MASC language in pale yellow and to move anything from our current policy, IJND, into our rules and procedures, which we'll be working on with the Director of Educational Technology in our next subcommittee meeting. And that is it for policy. So any questions? Great.
Everybody agree with the updates?
Yes.
Okay, committee discussion, votes to be taken. Can I have a motion to update policy JLDBA-RNP with the addition of the school, the appropriate school nurse be involved in the CRT?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to update policy EEAG, Student Transportation in Private Vehicles.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to update policy EFC, Free and Reduced Food Service.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to update policy IJOA, Field Trip and Student Travel.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to remove policy ILBA, District Program Assessments.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to remove policy IMA, Teaching Activities and Presentations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to update policy IN, IJND, Access to Digital Resources.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I never thought policies died. I look at the policy books, they just seem to grow fatter and fatter. Okay, we have a vote to approve the Educational Support Staff Collective Bargaining Agreement, 2025 to 2028.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. If I may, through the chair, I wanted to thank Esmeralda, and Chantelle is not here, but she was also participatory on that collective bargaining negotiations, and it was very successful. So I'm thankful and appreciative of the negotiations. It was very successful.
A vote to approve the donation from Friends of Nantucket Public Schools to Nantucket Elementary School for Jammy Witherell and Jamie Colom in the amount of $695.27.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation of $485 from Parents of Nantucket Elementary School Teacher Appreciation Lunch.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A vote to approve the donation from Friends of Nantucket Public Schools to Cyrus Pierce Middle School Summer Reading in the amount of $2,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A vote to approve transfers and invoices.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Hi, I'm not Nora.
I know.
But yeah, so it's been an eventful couple weeks, and we've got some eventful weeks coming up. For the past two weeks, students in AP classes have had their exams, but we are finally done. Yay. People worked really hard, and I know a lot of people were very confident in their tests, so that's great. Last Thursday during advisory, the school had its annual job fair where a variety of businesses on the island were set up in the Hall of the Whale and gave students the opportunity to explore potential jobs on island. Probably one of the best job fairs I've seen. And it was, there were a lot of businesses there, it was really great, and some really interesting positions that they were offering. If I wasn't already employed, I would be very excited. The, just this last Saturday was junior prom at the Great Harbor Yacht Club. I did not attend, but there was amazing attendance from the junior class, as well as some other grades. Everyone had a fantastic time. I heard that it was probably one of the best proms in recent years. So kudos to the junior class officers, they did a great job. The sophomores took, or are in the middle of taking their math MCAS today. They will complete that tomorrow. So the other grades had a delayed start today and tomorrow. Tomorrow, there's also a district-wide band concert at the high school at 7:00 PM. This will be the last band concert of the school year. I highly recommend that everyone attend. It's my favorite concert of the year. This Thursday also, we will have the chorus performing their annual masterwork concert at the First Congregational, excuse me, First Congregational Church at 6:00 PM. This year's masterwork is titled "Mass in Blue." Nora wanted me to add that it's jazz and blues-related, so I'm excited for that. That's going to be great.
Cecilia, I'm sorry, is that Thursday?
The Thursday at 6:00.
Okay, thank you.
At the First Congregational. I also, I didn't get to double-check this, but I do know we have a rock band concert coming up. I'm not sure if it's next week. Is it next Wednesday? This Wednesday? Because it's during the, okay. Next Wednesday. That's what I thought. No, no, you're good. Yeah, so next Wednesday is the rock band concert, so take a look at that. The district band concert is tomorrow. Sorry, I lost my place. Okay, this weekend, we will also have the NHS Drama Club performing the play "All in the Timing." The shows are Friday, May 23rd at 6:00 PM, and Saturday, May 24th at 1:00 PM and 6:00 PM in the NHS Auditorium.
All in the timing, is that coming?
All in the timing.
It is, yes.
We've got a couple of events on the 30th coming up. We will have the Special Olympics on May 30th organized by Mrs. Thompson. There will be some high school volunteers helping out with that, specifically the students in PE pals. I know quite a few people in the district are looking forward to that. It's going to be fun. Also on the 30th is senior ball coming up at the Nantucket Yacht Club. Seniors will have dinner to celebrate their achievements. We are very excited to have a live band, La Tulip, playing for a portion of the event, after which we will have a DJ dancing for any. for any students or family who wish to join in on that, which is very exciting. Any questions?
Thank you, Cecilia.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Through the chair, please. Thank you, mentioned this, Cecilia, but we also have the chorus masterwork on Thursday.
Yeah, on Thursday, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I got it, yeah, I got that.
She did. I clarified that. I do have one question, Cecilia, I'm sorry. Who is the director of the drama club this year or the advisor? I know I asked you this before.
I know, and I
That's all right.
I had Nora look into it, and then I forgot.
That's right. I will attend?
Yes.
And I'll find out.
Yes, I was just going to say. Let me repeat that. So, it's Kylie Murphy, teacher, and Morgan Smith-Jones, ESP.
Oh, great, thank you.
I, thank you.
Subcommittee, you've done well with the contract. Anybody else?
So, with the policy, we had a policy meeting.
Policy.
Yes, and I did attend, keep kind of collaborative. And I've got us out of jail by my attendance, so I feel good about that.
Thank you. Agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. So, we will take a look at student enrollment. We will certainly share the calendar for graduation and end-of-year activities, although Cecilia and Nora do such an excellent job. I don't know if I need to go into great detail. We will focus on our English learners at the next meeting with an English learner update. The access scores have been released, so we'll learn a little bit about that. And hopefully, they will be released by that time, although it may be momentary, in which case, I don't know if you'll get the actual scores,